We're here at our regular September's school board meeting, so I'll officially call the meeting to order. Taking roll call, please note that. The only director that we're missing is Director Sand. We don't expect, but she might join remotely, so we'll keep an eye on that. Do I have a volunteer to read the mission and vision statements?
Hello.
Okay, thanks, Brad.
At Decorah Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as their fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families, and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decorah Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision of the Decorah Community School District is. Decorah Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Thank you. And we have one item of old business, which is the second reading of board policies, including the six hundreds, eight hundreds, and nine hundreds.
And these have just the recommended changes with, with the, with the laws. You know, I think there's the civics instruction that's got to be done by twenty seven. There's a couple of things about coursework, disposing of buildings. That was that new one that if you remember Cedar Rapids did the, when they sold their building, they hurried up and sold it before the law went into effect. So all recommended by ISAB. Couple of things got moved around, nine oh five point one, community use of school facilities. I fully expect us to have a third reading next month, but we'll. We didn't want to hold up the whole nine hundreds. We're still tweaking a few things out on the fee schedules, make sure that we're. Applying the same standard to all the like groups that we have in our community.
Yeah, and then reviewing, the only comments that I have is regarding the nine hundred series. You know, obviously, we're committed to financial responsibility. And it simply is not always free to have our facilities available, especially with public events when it's essential to have facility support and admin present, I think, and I compliment. Staff that have put in that extra time on weekends to make this possible in the past, but I do want us to, to have time to give some thought to the fee structure and then also to have supporting documents. That can support staff that are fielding those calls, inquiring about facility use. Ahead of today's meeting, I did have a chat with Riley, he's here tonight, and I know that he had ideas about an FAQ document that didn't make it in time for tonight's agenda. So I wanted to discuss to see if the board would consider, you know, what that might look like if we waited to give this a little more thought to give it another.
Yeah, I think this is an important process because there's more facility use all the time. It's a great thing that the community has organizations and activities that need space. And we certainly want to encourage that, but by the same token, every time there is something going on, it's a burden on somebody's plate. And there's not too many plates that catch that, so as we're doing this, we need to be sure to do it in a way that doesn't always go, you know, to the same people, same salaried people who are just doing more stuff because that's what they do. So we really need to do this right, so I think we should separate the facility use policy for purposes of approving these policies.
Set of motion run.
No, not yet, no. Observation.
In reading through all the six hundreds, eight hundreds, nine hundreds, I had some questions about some other ones. So the six hundreds are all about the education we're providing and what we're providing and how. At the moment, I think six oh three point four is referenced in six oh three point one. They want to invert that so that we're using the reference document before. So six oh three point four talks about multicultural, gender fair education. It's referenced three documents prior. Okay. So if you didn't know where to look for that, it's kind of hard to find. Also in the six hundreds, when we talk about computer science, I know like my second grader is taking coding. I don't know if we want to put that into six oh threes to spell out what we're necessarily pushing towards.
Could.
I mean, we're spelling it out in other ways in six oh three where we're talking about, they'll take classes in art and music and physical education, health education. It's just a question, not a demand thing, but I noted it when I was thinking through.
So you're thinking to give specific examples of what computer science means?
Potentially, or in fact, we're teaching coding as its own separate special at the moment, which.
Then we're locked into doing it, but as a, as an, I mean, I always rewrite the policy of, if that would not be something we could sustain as a district.
Another question in the six hundreds, whether it's six hundred even or six oh three would be, do we want to affirm a more comprehensive environmental education role in the district? It gets referenced really shortly in a list of many things in six oh three five on health education, but not anywhere else. So it's more a question of, do we want to make that a bigger priority or not? I know that's being done elsewhere, but in six oh three point six, I had an internal question, so I'm going to turn towards there. Do we teach CPR and P E class?
Health class is required.
For our graduation component, for every student. Six oh three eleven, it says that there will be links and there are not links. Six oh five point three's got a parentheses that either supposed to be earlier parentheses or not supposed to be there. It's in the second paragraph. So those are my thoughts on the six hundreds. Getting into the eight hundreds, which is its own section of documents about buildings and sites. Eight oh two point seven talks about energy conservation, so my question would be, do we want to expand that to be talking about our goals as a district? Maybe that's thinking about energy, not only conservation, but how we're designing building in the future or renovating or what a district priority towards energy conservation might mean. I have to spin forward. I wrote notes, but they're not comprehensive. Eight oh four point one lists facility inspections, and I was just going to ask out loud if we have those scheduled. It says we're going to have them scheduled, but I don't need to know when that is and just ask if they're on a schedule, but.
They are.
Yep. I assumed as much, but I was like, let's ask the question out loud. Eight oh four fours about asbestos. It notes that we should follow precautions, but it doesn't list what any of that means. Or how we would remediate if it comes up. I think it's probably pertinent at the moment, given the state of two of the buildings that we are hoping to replace. I would assume pretty strongly that either Westside or John Klein probably has asbestos in it, so.
Dude, yeah, there's probably asbestos that'd freak people out, but there's asbestos in, I'm sure those two buildings and Kerry Lee and.
It's in basically any building built before nineteen seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
So and it's fine as long as it's undisturbed, so like I'm not trying to say there's a I'm not concerned about asbestos in our buildings right now, but as we get towards sure demolition.
And, and we work with the asbestos guy from over by Piasta on identifying our asbestos and he's a fascinating human being because you say, I just, I'm in Central City and he'll say, oh, you've got asbestos in your multipurpose building. It's that little strip above the locker box. You're like, how does he know that? So, but yeah, Curtis and I have talked about that and just about, you know, removal. You hire somebody to do the removal that follows the guideline, so I don't know what we would do differently with eight oh four point four. Like, yeah, I just added a sentence that says, like, I'm not going to take that order.
No, but I was like, do we need to state more about what those precautions are? That there's, we should refer to handbook for someone.
And probably, probably you're, we're, they're a little general just because it's, it's entirely possible some of that could change as more preservation is, is gleaned. You know, we, you know, we could, like, we just did remove asbestos. We abate asbestos by hiring somebody that does asbestos abatement.
Yeah, I think. Or do you, do you want to continue running through your comments or does that?
Oh, so I mean, I've got more, so.
So regarding the six hundred series, when you say that things are going to be linked, I don't think they need to be literally linked in this report. It just refers to I think it's speaking in general terms. Just, these policies obviously are meant to stay high level and to be used year after year. I don't think that it needs. Some of the detail that you're asking about, I think they're good questions just about to be familiar with our, our procedures, but just as a friendly reminder that these are to stay high level for very nuanced calls to action depending on the situation, so it's not a standard operating procedure.
Right. I mean, I think the second one is probably a pretty static website that would be very easy to link to, and I'm just concerned by Iowa code numbers at the moment because we're rewriting all of the Iowa codes to follow executive order. Can't remember which one.
And it might be already dated or with.
And that's, it's like.
One thing about.
Your way to link towards those.
Some of the things in the policies where it's like it's referenced different places. These are all, ours are based like ninety-nine percent of the districts in the state on policies from the Iowa Association of School Boards, so we can, in some cases, vary from them, but I think there is benefit to basically using the ordering and the sections of that I A S B puts out, because when there are changes to be made, we know, oh, yeah, that's six oh three, not, well, we better find out where that is. So a lot of it is, it's like handed to us and.
And maybe the six oh three point one and six oh three point four is a comment towards I A S B, like you're referencing something that occurs later, but we don't know about yet.
And if you've got a list, I probably, because we're not going to necessarily change it all, we should give everybody the same amount of time. You know, we're bringing the nine oh five point one back next month. We certainly table this all until next month and that'll give you and I an opportunity to go over it and.
Sure.
Be more accurate with it.
I think there's, there's some other ones in here where it's probably pretty simple to make the changes I noted, like nine oh six has insert district name here, probably insert our district name. But I'm open to either. I wanted to raise some of these as questions, not just as. All, all good moments. I don't know that there's anything wrong, but questions of us as a district and what we want to set as priorities and how we label those in our guiding documents.
Yeah, the two things I guess I would throw, yeah, maybe it's best to defer for a month, but we have to be aware that some of these policies are dictated by Iowa code, whether we like it or not. We, you know, we have to approve them, but we have no choice in the matter. It is, you know, required you will state this, and this year in particular, I've never seen so many revisions in one year. Did that jump out to you?
Yeah, yeah, usually it's just little, little pieces.
That summary that I was like, yeah, because we had a legislature that although they would proclaim to be in favor of local control and small government, anybody that gets a wild hair comes up with an idea and says, oh, you're going to do this, and now we have a new policy, the yeah, I mean, the things in the past where, oh, you have to have your entire curriculum online. Okay, that's really useful. So we need to be careful in doing these that we comply with the orders from on high. As it used to be referred to by a prior superintendent, the great school board under the golden dome of Des Moines. And it's never been more true than it is now, so.
Yeah, and I concur with that sentiment. Definitely need to have our our policy documents follow state code, but also there is a lead way within these to highlight certain aspects if we choose to or want to, so.
I think you mentioned detailing environmental sustainable, sustainability of education.
Ah, it's environmental education.
Environmental education. You know, I've seen firsthand that that is very present, especially and I think mostly because of the ages of my children right now, but I've seen you know, really active teachers and students at both the middle school and the high school. Cheers to Mr. Larry Berland for winning Teacher of the Year in Environmental Education and taking multiple teams to the national level the last two years. I, I think there's a lot to celebrate in the Decorah School District.
Fifteen years after he retired, he's still winning.
Right, so while I think that that's wonderful. I don't know if we need more, if it's, if it's okay for us to assume that that should be in board policy, I, you know, I'm I'm in favor of calling more specifically to that, but I, I just wonder about the, the process of making changes like that without having more of a conversation with admin or a survey of teachers on their curriculum and instruction.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be an excellent thing to gather as well. Six oh three gives us the discretion as a board to offer additional courses and instruction programs for any grade level, and so I think we have the leniency to if we want to highlight something to do it, not saying we have to, but.
There is certainly a risk of getting too specific, but we can dance that fine line.
Yeah, and you're depending on how it gets word spent, the fear is you overcommit yourself to a curriculum that then later on you have to remove because it's too costly or you don't have the resources or personnel or, or something like that, so. But, but I mean, that could be worded too, so that, you know, it's the intent of the district to offer certain courses.
So, yeah, or it could be the basic instruction program of students and it'll then grades. I'll let you fill in the blank. Will include English, math, arts, social studies, math, science, et cetera. There is a note there that also includes environmental education or whatever that framework would look like, but.
Here's the last thing I would say is, we do have a person whose title is curriculum director who is responsible for doing all of this. And we do not want to do that job, and we should, should not that impose on that. That impose on that. But if I would just, I don't know if it's a motion, but just suggest that we table. The entire, well, I don't know if we have to do all the six eights and nines, but.
I will just, yeah, I'd recommend we table them all at this point, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to table the six hundred, eight hundred and nine hundred series.
So questioners.
Well, I'm stating that he made a motion, so in order for us to vote, we would need to also have a second, so I'm waiting. Okay, the motion was seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, I'll ask for an approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, you're in a motion on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next is approval of consent items with minutes, votes and personnel.
Anything thing that needed to be separated out?
That's correct.
Make the motion to approve our consent items.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Um next is open forum or communication from the public. So I know new teachers are being introduced tonight, but aside from. Is there anybody that's here specifically to make an open comment? Okay. We'll move on. Tonight's presentation is the mentoring and induction program of new t- teachers to be introduced.
We have six new teachers in the district this year, all of middle school, high school. Um they have taken part in our new teacher academy, January is before major service days or there in August. Um everyone has a mentor. They have talking points every month, so there's a lot of support. Everybody has P L C lead, ladder teachers or instructor coaches they can work with. So we really were proud of the last few years to create this great mentoring and induction program, and I'm going to turn it over to them. To just introduce themselves, um what your teaching this year and a little about yourself.
Yeah, one of the things we've always enjoyed is hearing your background, uh where you grew up. Where you went to college and where you were before you joined us.
You want me to stand or?
Whatever you prefer, the.
You set the precedent.
So my name is Danny Mayo. I am, uh, let's see, I'm a graduate of South Tama, two thousand and three. I went to college in co-college in Cedar Rapids. I got my B A in biology, environmental science. Um I had no plans to teach when I graduated college. Um. I was in a chemistry lab for a couple of years and realized I wanted a new career, so I got the necessary. Credits, I get my teaching license. Um I was actually living out in Pennsylvania at the time. Um. My girlfriend, now wife, um we moved back. I got my first teaching job in Kokoda. I taught there for four years. Um biology, chemistry, a lot of physical science, the freshman force. I taught, I coached them. Um we had two children out there. We knew that having our second one, we were wanting to get closer to home. So I moved to Tama, so we moved back to Tama. Um in two twenty fourteen, I believe, I've been. At South Tama where I went to school and grew up the last eleven years. Um. My wife and I, Claire, we were looking for new challenges and new scenery. Um we were aware of the Decorah Town and Community. We really enjoyed coming up here just personally and. Uh that's my wife or that's my life professionally. Um so we have two children. Um Lily is a seventh grader here. Uh she's playing volleyball and all the earth sports and loves reading and Legos and snakes and um. Griffin is a sixth grader. He's out for football. He he is that he's doing the whittling club at the Vestreheim. He loves that right now. Um and just as a family, we like traveling and camping and being outdoors and. Hopefully that wasn't too long for the other. Referral sources for me and and um did some subbing last semester in Osage. So we moved here from St. Andrews. Um but I am a military brat, so I moved around a lot growing up, but also that was mine. And um so the last couple of weeks, it's been a whirlwind, exciting, exhausting. Um but I I am loving it. Um this is definitely, I made the right decision to. To switch my career tra- trajectory for the remaining years of my career. My husband and I moved here in um early August. We have um. Four adult children, five grandchildren and one other way, and I think there's six dogs. So very busy houses.
My name is Heidi and I am the special ed co-teacher on math team at high school. I am the late teen, I graduate of the decorah high school, so I grew up here. Uh taught in San Antonio and in Apple Valley, did some nonprofit consulting. Um it's a nonprofit consulting up in Minneapolis and uh worked on home evaluation with the development department. Uh came back to Decorah in two thousand and ten. And with my two girls, they are grads of Decorah High School. So my youngest has just launched to Luther and. I'll be there for fifteen minutes on the road. My husband is the director of admissions.
Um I'm Sydney Hughbrink. Um I grew up in Melbourne, Melbourne area. Um. I graduated high school in twenty fifteen from Evansburg. Um I went to U and I, graduated in twenty nineteen there. Um then I did a half semester during COVID, um long-term subing um in special education in Waterloo. Um and then I taught in Waterloo for another year doing middle school um special education. Um and then my husband, uh he was in Marines and so he started conflict. Anyway, since he was out of the military, then we went to um or he started with Iowa State. For forestry, which is how we ended up here, but I taught at Gilbert for two years while he finished that. Um middle school, special ed as well. Um and then we lived in. Plainfield for two years and I taught at Jamesville two years, um special education there. And then uh my husband, the last year, has been driving back and forth to the Florida area to September's Winnebago County um. For the forest, for forestry, um and so we decided we needed to be here instead of him driving back and forth every day um. And before we had kids, uh we originally wanted to move like out west or. Somewhere with beautiful scenery and you know, what better place than Iowa than Decorah? So it felt working out nicely in our favor um. We just moved, actually just closed out our house two weeks ago, so it's been a crazy search for this school year, but um. I'm now at the high school and I love it. Um I'm doing levels over there um at the high school. And um I actually just reached out about preschool for my son and then that's how I. Kind of found out about the job, like, well, I was gonna give me teaching job. Um and so I it was actually like the blessing uh that I reached out to who I did um. And I have a son, uh Griffin, who's three, and an daughter, Jennifer, who's thirty one.
Yeah, Wes and Crew, um he is our five, six band band teacher of enforcement, for example, he's a marching man at the high school, he was walking times with him. Um he is a worker grad. Um he was at Nata Plainfield. Uh for a year, I believe, and then recently had had power to win and is now in Decorah, so. Excited to have Wes on board there.
Great. Well, thank you all for being here. Many of you have relocated to take on your new role. Um. Being in public education right now is a really important time, so thank you for all that that you do and all the time and heart that you're gonna share. In the months ahead. And thanks for being here in person tonight. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to new business. And um item A is to approve the preschool collaborative twenty eighty agreements.
Uh so we do these every year. I would say um. Uh there's a process by which the business office needs to do the math calculations. And then I had Shanna confirming with the centers just to make sure we had the right. Uh director name and their hours, and so we're still work on Kinder House. So we're not gonna approve Kinder House tonight, uh but we would put forth the other four. So that's uh Sunflower, Onasori, St. Ben's and Nessie.
So close.
So close. Should have started, should have started with the hard ones. That's how you do that. What's the the fund, just curious?
Uh I need to make sure the first and especially I got did not need requirements as far as what we have to move to state. So basically their other umbrella as private preschool partners that follow out by standards. And the first one did not go see here, so then I told Dr. Froman about that. They revised and. Now they're not certain that it still does need those standards, so I have a call into the state and the state. Uh now talking to Dr. Froman about this as well to ensure that we're representing that.
But that would probably be a good maybe backup step. Like this is a little unique. This is certainly allowed by the state, but. Well, like in Cedar Rapids or Central City, you do your own preschool. You just have district employees, you run the preschool. Uh the funding comes to you, you keep the funding. We have collaborative partners. Who basically they do, they operate the statewide voluntary preschool at their site. And we're their collaborative partner. The funding comes to us uh as a state entity and then we disperse it out to. The site, so it's important when we enter these agreements that they are meeting their requirements so the state does fund them.
And it's kind of our job now, we need to make sure they need all of those requirements, so it's quite a lot to. Um and we are very neat. A lot of the schools around here might have one collaborative partner where we have five in Missar, which is a collaborative partner, but is also a partner. Uh so it does get a little bit. It's amazing and challenging to all of these things. So we need to vote to figure that out and possibly bring that with state for.
Or a future meeting.
Future meeting, we'll just say. We'll make a motion to approve our collaborate collaborative preschool agreements with the other four. New schools besides Kinder House.
Second.
Okay, hearing the motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And next is approval of the Luther College M O U agreement. And if you remember, we have discussed this before, but this is just the final.
Yeah.
Document.
Allers and Cooney has looked it over. They're recommending that this this will work. Um I don't recall, I think and data sharing got added. As a uh um a piece to this, so uh obviously we'll. Think it's a great opportunity to work with Luther, happy to be the first one they asked, so. Well, uh I'd recommend we approve this and then it sounds like we're gonna have a joint signing scheduled on a future Wednesday morning.
This Wednesday.
Uh is it this Wednesday or is it a week from this Wednesday?
It might be from this Wednesday. Yeah, we from this Wednesday.
Where the two presidents and I'm sure other dignitaries.
You know, make a motion to approve the finalized agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, hearing the motion and a second, any further discussion?
Do we need more specific duty summer terms? We state September and August. I don't know if we'd want more sp- specificity, but just raising this question.
Well, um. We's. I guess if we're gonna sign it on the. Uh September seventeenth, we could put that date in there. Your the term is where it just kind of says September through August, yeah.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I was just curious. It's kind of. Broad, yeah. So what is ending on October, August twenty twenty six really mean where um.
Only it works well and it just keeps auto renewing.
Sure, sure. Um so I don't know if August thirty first, twenty twenty six makes sense or. But I wanted to raise the question of it. We needed more specificity.
You know, this was reviewed by Allers and Cooney and um. Yeah, I guess.
I I don't think it's a problem.
Heard about that, it to not approve it tonight.
Well, I think we could just make the recommendation and modify, put the dates in and then approve it. Is that?
Um yeah, the one thing that I would be cautious that if this is coming up, this joint signing. Gotta make sure that we don't do something that winds up being different than what Luther has, and we certainly need to approve it. Before it's formally signed.
Yeah, it is next Wednesday, the seventeenth is the. And I don't know, um you know, I I don't know if you've been informed about Luther's approval process.
I don't, I don't know Luther's approval process, so Darlene and I put the dates in today, not knowing, not having that and. So we have it. Well, what I would say is that we want specific dates would be fine. Uh and then as soon as we put those, you know, if we get a recommendation with specific dates. We would share immediately back with Luther and say, this is what we approved, so we avoid Ron's part where now if Luther would come back and say, oh, we had. Different dates than that, then we would. Yeah, I think we just approve it as to it.
Or approve it with with recommended September seventeenth through August thirty first or to match Luther College.
Well, if you're gonna put dates in, I would make it um September one to August thirty one because that's a. Or maybe even August one and July thirty one. Because, you know, things might be beginning. Prior to September first, but um. Yeah, that would. I'll make a motion that we approve it with the understanding that. With Luther's agreement, we may put in dates or we may just sign this. So prove it however it gets agreed on.
So we have an amended motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a second, any further? Okay, and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Next is a item C approval of universal pediatric service agreement.
And this is um. Agreement, we've done these before, but this is a student specific one. And I kind of shared with the board members, we don't want to get too specific, but Laura is in the district, so this is services above and beyond just. What our nurse could provide.
Yeah, so some students in the district um because of arrangements they have outside their school, the students from school or the nurse. Um and so it's just a standard thing that any of the nursing companies will do, whether to nurse or pediatricians or um. There's a place in Maroon two that also does it, um but essentially they write out kind of what they're responsible for doing in the school setting and then what we're responsible for. So. If you look, um if you look at it. Under standard or under number three, it talks about duties of the universal pediatric, it's kind of a building to train up the nurse or what they're responsible for, and then it talks about duties of the district. So really for us, it's um coordinating the students I H P, the health plan that's in place for the students. Um in this particular case, um then there's well, it's a ride on school, a school bus. Um so that doesn't always happen sometimes, but they're transport that they included that in for the soon that the nurse can ride our transportation. Um and then provide any training necessary that we feel that the nurse knew they have to be in the restaurant with us, so um. Yeah, I. This didn't used to happen and now it does, and I think it's a really good thing to have in place just so that everybody knows, you know, where they stand and what they're.
Yeah.
And another thing I'll just point out is that it it does make mention that the nurse doesn't do anything educational. They're clearly just a friend of health and we as a disorder. From education.
Go ahead. Any questions for Laura?
I think this is a good development that we do have specific agreements, so. Make a motion to approve. The agreement.
Second.
Okay, hearing the motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Next is item D approval of the. A I A agreement. Um, so this is. Relative to our um. Contract with Myron Construction, who we have hired as our construction manager at risk. As we all know, this is a unique time to be building a school and for many in um. A bunch of it industries as it regards to tariffs. Um so this agreement. We've both this the school district and Myron Construction have spent months on this agreement. Um it's a very lengthy document, but it covers who carries the liability and of cost. With the risk of um tariffs in precinct construction or material prices.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a very lengthy document, as you can see, um. We had uh Allers and Cooney, Connor Watson is the person who does construction for them. He really was the point negotiator with Myron on the document. And then, of course, you get down to is it C. Uh F where it talks about the tariffs. And as we talked a couple meetings ago, we didn't want to have all the responsibility for. The fees for tariffs, so we kind of met him in the middle where we'll pay the first. Two percent uh of overages and um split the rest. They have calculated that risk at three hundred and thirty thou- their portion of that risk at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and so then that gets. Put it back into the budget as a contingency, which we'll we'll see on Wednesday, but. Uh basically you're paying for it one way or the other, like this isn't like Myron's like and I'm not saying this like facetiously, I. I I guess I didn't think through where the money was gonna come from to cover this, but Myron. Isn't out of pocket on this. If there's a tariff, then then it just then the product is three hundred and if. It would be the maximum amount of tariffs that they would uh be three hundred and thirty. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars would come come out of the thirty eight million or whatever the final number is for the project cost. Um. They offered it, Aaron and City can say they offered it as a, well, if we rewrite this contract. Then we have three hundred thousand, that's like a budget cut, but then we have to set aside three hundred and thirty thousand to do it, so.
Yeah.
My recommendation was this took months to do. Uh I know there's a lot of back and forth with Connor. Uh I know we're getting kind of close and I was getting ready to go to Norway, uh so Ron, I asked Ron to kind of. Sit in, uh especially since he knew more, but just to make sure we weren't agreeing to anything. Uh or we were helping guide Connor at Oliver's, so. Based on all of that and the fact that it probably is three months in the process, I would recommend we just approve it as is. Um knowing that uh knowing that we're splitting some of the. Tariff and and as I understood today and Aaron or City can help me, the the bids will come in. Hopefully we get the bid process uh December eleventh. And then whoever gets awarded the bids will turn around and then they'll start placing their orders. So we won't know exactly on December eleventh, but we should know shortly after that if they're gonna come back and say, oh. There's a huge tariff on air conditioners now or whatever, so.
So it's a line item that I want to keep and I I really do like this to be as a line item within the project budget just to. Keep in mind as. A cost of this project, so Ron, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just. Honestly, I think at this point, there's been so much negotiation that we do not want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. Um, you know. If we are really going to have construction beginning. In the spring of twenty six, as we hope, um this is essential. It's like it's actually a little. Late, uh honestly, because of all the ass going back and forth, but um just first and foremost, hope that. That if the fear of tariffs doesn't come into play. But nobody knows.
And we have been um. We need meeting multiple times a month and this has come up for many months. We've talked about tariffs and. That Myron has not seen a large impact with projects they are bidding yet, um so.
Well, I think with all the time spent on it. Already I'll make the motion to approve. The agreement.
Both letters.
I'll second.
Actually, you're in second and first softly, yeah, as Brad made the motion, you're in the seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing them, motion carried. Um next is item E approval of the mentoring and induction program for para educators and associates.
And we're not sure if we've ever approved this before, but uh it's a handbook and anytime we have a handbook, we like to have those uh go to the board. So uh Dana, would there be any highlights that you, this is as. Very well spelled out in detail, but is there anything you want to highlight on this?
Yeah, I just think for the last few years, we've talked a lot about providing support for our parents, especially those that come mid-year, they just kind of get. Brought in to work with students and then we get a chance to talk to the best teacher, special ed teacher, or have any training or really know the students and so. Um trying to be proactive in that and put. Put a s- sports system in place for them like we have for teachers. So this was the first year that we had the two day. Uh new Para Academy alongside the new Teacher Academy and I've heard a lot of good feedback. On my end, I don't know about the schools, if you've heard things, because I haven't had a chance of. To reach out to all those para mentors yet to find out how they're feeling, but.
I will throw in a couple of the mentors came up and they were like, I wish this was here and I did it and it's fantastic. So I think it's great and not only for that, but having to go to person. Throughout the year, like I don't know this, what what can we do? So I've heard super positive about.
Yeah.
And just to be with them those days, like there it is so much information in a short time, so to have that be like that person making me back with.
Yeah, I think it adds value or I hope that it helps them feel valued as a school professional. Also, and just kind of mix that that link. So thank you for for the time that you've put into structuring a program to help them feel supported because.
Lot of input.
We all know that they are essential to. Our classroom teachers and staff being supported. We're grateful for all they do.
One thing I would ask, just um to clarify, I think it's. Uh I know the answer, but. We talk about uh para educators and associates, is there intended to be a difference between a. Para educator and associate or. Both are getting the same mentoring, right?
Yes, it might look a little different based on their role, but I would say we refer to. Uh maybe a study hall monitor as an associate, whereas the ones that are right in there working with the students are more referred to as parent educator.
But they would all get this.
It just might look a little different based on their role. Uh for instance, we had. New person in the Viking Success Center, and so his time looked a little different based on what his role was going to be this year.
Break it all.
Who falls into these mentor roles, this is their day. Teachers, special.
Yeah, I try appearance.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion that we improve the mentoring induction program for our para educators and associates.
I'll second.
Read a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. And next is a twenty eighty agreement for the management and operation of Crossroads Academy. Between um the Deportive Community School District and Corner Care.
Um and we we approved this back in July, um. Uh for their part, uh the person from the clinic here from Crossroads was unavailable and she had a few uh. Um changes, so they're kind of uh. Put in there in red and then I just added a little bit of blue. Laura and I met with uh. With their director to just go over this, we got the new rates, um and so we had we had put in some of our information. Uh that we wanted to have in, so you guys approved that in July and this is just kind of giving them an opportunity um. To get there and put in, we um she had a paternity leave that kind of messed with her ability to get back to me, so. There's a few things that they wanted that we just want to make sure that if we put them in, uh there is if there's a cost to it. Uh on our end, then then we turn back and bill it to clinic care, which then turns around and build it to everybody. Um but. Some things, you know, occasionally it's like if it's like site license for um. Uh subscription to an online uh um. Uh power score or something like that, if we could just add them in at no cost, we're not gonna charge them for something like that. It's only if they they push us over, so um. Yeah, and then just kind of clarifying some of the stuff that uh that we've done. So. But it gets pretty specific when it when it outlines like the number of parking stalls that uh that will provide at no cost to clinic care.
I appreciate that attention to detail, I guess.
That was in there before I got here, so.
Do we also specify that we will plow the snow for?
Uh I thought that there was something about still, but.
Yeah, snow removal, clinic care shall be responsible for payment of all utilities, lawn mowing, sidewalks, snow removal and garbage collection.
One thing similar to what Darren was mentioning earlier in the policies, paragraph five financing, I see, I read there, it's like. It's asking a question, not answering. The question, maybe we'd wanna uh say. It is on a monthly basis or it.
Oh, yeah, which one is it?
It's yeah, that's needs to be removed, so I'm gonna remove it as we talk. It's on a semester basis.
Okay.
We bill on a semester basis.
So clarification on that, we did talk about that and it um so they sent us kind of a monthly anything breakdown, but then we just bill for the semester as well.
Yeah, cause with.
So we we make monthly payments to clinic care and then we don't go back to our partners and and bill them monthly. We bill two times a year, which is how special ed billing is done.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the uh. Twenty eighty agreement. With clinic care for the operation of the.
I'll second.
Yeah.
There was a motion by Ron to approve and seconded by Brad. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Um, we are to item G approval of Luther College twenty eighty agreement for nursing.
And this is specific to nursing uh classes. Uh classes. God in our school by Luther College nurses.
Yes, accurately, so just for third and fourth graders. Um Angie Cooney from Luther had reached out to Selena Pondom. District Nurse. And um so Selena came to me and so we've been kind of working together to. Set up some times that we work, um it will always be on a Wednesday, but we kind of have a Wednesday schedule that's. Includes guidance classes one week and not the next, and so these classes would be opposite. So it would really be a time that is kind of extra in the schedule. So we just found some days that worked and they're gonna. With your approval, come in four times and meet with each grade level and just for this year, teach the same lessons at both grade levels. And then there was some teacher input in what they would like to see with those classes. So they arranged it that way.
It's a great partnership.
And as as just a quick reminder, anytime we got college students in our building, a lot of times it's super positive, certainly support this. Um we just have an agreement with that institution. Um and it has randomly happened that uh. A local person might be at a. University of Phoenix or someplace that we don't normally have a partnership and they want to do their student teaching or practice or get hours. Without, you know, and live at home and and I'm not, this is previous district that districts I've been in. So we just say, yeah, we just need to have an agreement so that uh so that uh we have permission for you to be in our building and so. But, yeah.
I would make one observation about the just the way we've got this written, um. Under G, we call it the uh twenty eighty agreement. The agreement itself does not reference twenty eighty, which is good because um. Twenty eighty agreements are between two governmental entities, so this, I think we just should just be clear. You know, everyone knows upfront, this is not a twenty eighty, it's an agreement between a private party and a public, unlike the, you know, the clinic care. So, but it it spells it out well, I think it's a.
So the.
It's a agreement.
The agreement does not need to be amended, but the agenda items.
Yeah, just so we're using terminology, it's technically a twenty eighty agreement has to be recorded with the Iowa Secretary of State and all this stuff and. It's not, we don't.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve an agreement with Luther. With the nursing students coming to carry.
Second.
Hearing the motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Next, we are to item H review of annual outstanding obligations report and discussion on borrow capacity. Um. You know, as we are, we're getting down to final.
Did we skip G? Was that?
Wasn't G just?
Oh, it's.
No, but we just did G. It's kind of a dump, there's a G and a nine G, but it's the document from G, so we're actually on track right now.
Yeah, I think it is. There's the agenda.
Yeah, the uh.
The attached to the town.
The attachment is, yeah, okay.
Okay, we all agree that we're on H. Okay, let's proceed. Um, as we are. Moving through the process of our school design project, we're gonna have some tough decisions to make in the days and weeks ahead. And I wanted us to have a conversation as a board um. To have time to talk about. Our debt history as a district and just our debt capacity today. Um. And before we get into that, I do want to. Celebrate the fact that we did pass this important bond on the first try. Remember that required two yes votes in two separate elections. And this is also at a time when. And this is also at a time when we are retiring debt from previous. Um projects, so. Anytime that I tend to. Get anxious or have fear about what's ahead, I I try to center myself around celebrating that we are to this point. And that we can continue to move forward and and and. Find creative solutions to um. To the challenges we face ahead.
Absolutely, so uh the first is just a screenshot from the Iowa State Treasurer, this is an annual report. Uh where you districts list the debt that they have um. And so our debt currently uh is the revenue uh bond or anticipated revenue bond. For that we took out and borrowed against our save um and that was part of the high school project remodel. That's gonna mature, so the last payment will will be um in June first of twenty twenty nine. And those payments are, I was just looking at it today, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, maybe a little bit more, I think maybe the the pebble just dropped off, I've got another document that talks to that. And then we're leasing the the one-to-one devices for the students and and that tends to be a debt that we replace. When that retires, we replace it with a new debt um, so. Those were pretty, um that was an easy report to do because we just don't have a lot of debt as as a reminder. So then I started to put together some other information um. Just kind of uh a summary of of that uh, uh we've got the. The two active debts, saved debt at the high school improvements, and then we retired a pebble debt um. So we were used to paying uh about five hundred and fifty thousand out of the pebble and that's retired, so this was our first year. That we didn't have any pebble debt and that's retired um, I could talk a little bit more about the debts coming up. We don't have an Apple lease for teacher right now, for teacher computers, that's typically something that we've we've had and we look to. Uh leasing computers next year for staff. I thought it'd be coming back on, um and then of course the other big recently retired debt was the high school um Geo bonds for the high school remodel. Um and that started out as a ten million dollar Geo bond that uh uh we took out in two thousand and ten and and retired that debt. It was, it was uh. Just interesting for me because our payments really dropped down quite a bit from one point two million to about four hundred thousand the last year. So and that because that's a general obligation debt, that's uh part of our our debt service on our property tax. So. Probably uh just uh I don't have this in there, but I can share this afterwards, I just went back. When I was in that website, it was pulling down just information from all the previous debts. The the tough thing is sometimes the description wasn't the best, but in two thousand and eleven, we had taken out the ten point. Or ten million, four hundred and five thousand dollar debt for the high school um. Then we had a uh six point three million dollar save revenue debt um. Uh no, we didn't, that was, we had, we had two general obligation loans um. Ten point, ten million, four hundred and five thousand dollars and six million, three hundred and thirty thousand, those are general obligation for the high school. And then we had a little over three million for the Kerry Lee remodel. And so what I looked at was just debt over time and we went from like twenty million dollars up to twenty six million because we added some. Some computer leases and then the uh borrowing uh, we added a save and the pebble debt on there. And of course, then the other thing is you refund these so they get named different things, but we hovered it like twenty million and then we just, as we. Pay it off, obviously the debt goes down. Um, in anticipation of the discussion on Wednesday, I did ask Travis from Alden Cooney just to prepare. What our capacity is and and uh um Travis prepared the capacity a little bit more aggressively than than. We've talked about in the past um, so when I say these numbers, like just understand, we're not gonna. We would never borrow all this money. Um, so first of all, he has a note about the the pebble. Uh the ability to borrow against pebble right now, so you can take out a loan, knowing that you're gonna get your pebble funds every year. And that's where you could have three million, five hundred and eleven dollars and uh eight hundred and fifty nine dollars. Uh if you borrowed against pebble um. And he's got a note in there, understand that the pebble uh has been approved through twenty twenty nine. So you really can't borrow that much because you're only borrowing against basically four years, so um not that like. Your payments would turn around and be a fourth of what you borrow. If if that makes sense um, or a third of what you borrow. Uh the real, you know, when I said to Travis, I said, what if the district wanted to borrow an additional three million dollars? He said, well, I would recommend that you do that on us, on us uh the save or the sales tax revenue capacity. So he put together some numbers and and like I said, those numbers, uh the project funds are are very large. Uh you can do a ten year and you could borrow ten million, four hundred and forty seven thousand, but um because this is max capacity. Your your uh payment on that would be over one point five billion dollars. And as just kind of a check, we're used to, our our previous payments were are that our pebble save. Are around a half a million dollar, so so understanding, so I said to Travis, I said, well. What uh is it as easy as just dividing that by thirds, if you said, I want my payment to be five hundred thousand dollars? Does that mean I could borrow a third of ten million? And he said, well, it's not that easy, but kind of in the ballpark of, he said, I he could structure some stuff. One of the things that we borrow against save, we currently have a save loan, so they would have to do a wraparound where. The current save loan ends in twenty twenty nine, so they would borrow additional funds with smaller payments in the beginning and then they ramp up. When the other debt falls off um. And so Travis is gonna prepare some stuff for me for Friday, which I could also share on that, but. Um with regards to questions for the board, with regards to capacity, where we've been, like I said, I do have. A document that uh um I was working on for Wednesday that just kind of shows the history of our. Of our debt over time, and it's only as good as what was typed into the website, but you get a feel for for how we tapped into, I guess. Uh we started out with the general obligation loan for the high school and then we added the the revenue loans or the sales tax loans. Uh one year after and two years after.
Ron, were you on the board at that time?
Yes.
And do you have anything to share from your historical perspective of making?
Uh one thing. Yeah, one thing I recall was this discussion, there were shorter ti- time periods at that time on how. Far out you could commit your pebble and save funds, I forget exactly what pebble was. But the save was like twenty, we'll get twenty twenty nine, so we couldn't. Take anything more on that, even though it would have been a good source if we could um. But uh now I believe that's been extended to twenty twenty, twenty forty nine, twenty fifty.
I believe it's twenty fifty one, so that was, that that's why we could borrow, you look back in the document, I think here refers to. Twenty fifty one, and that was a big uh extension for school districts because of, well, twenty fifty, so. It's either twenty fifty or twenty fifty one, but.
It's January first of fifty one.
So. And you didn't borrow those all the first right away, you.
No.
You added uh one of, one of them a year later and one of them a second year later.
I don't remember being both separate, but I know at least one of them came later, I'll throw that.
Yeah, so the first one was for six million.
Something.
And then the second one was one point two six million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe pebble was at, you know, at that time, still paying for computers, uh for the lease of computers. There was an opportunity at one point which we took advantage of to refinance because interest rates went down and. I don't know exactly what year that was, maybe two thousand and fifteen um, where we. Issued new bonds and paid off the old ones because whatever the rates were, it dropped enough to be. Significant enough to justify the additional expense of reissuing, so.
And in recent history, pebble safe has been used for. Um, we've, we've done a lot of roof work. In the last two summers, yeah, or so.
Yeah, so pebble saver. About some information on that um, so the uh fund balance, I. We had this getting ready for Wednesday night as well, the fund balance in twenty twenty three between the two accounts was four point two million. I'm just gonna round uh then, uh so if you remember the the major purchase for the twenty two, twenty three with the bus barn. At one point six million as well as three buses and making our our pebble and save payments. So then our fund balance was down to two point nine million um, which then we bought. For one point nine seven five million, we bought the land from the city and some vans and made our uh uh. Pebble bond payment and our save payment and this year we bounced back up to three point seven million. And that's included in there is the roof project for over a million dollars and purchase of two buses and two vans. So um. The the revenue between both of them uh. Right now, last year's save was two point two million and pebble was one point five million, so. Three point seven million dollars that that the district gets between those two funding sources. And we've done some really major things and um have spent it down, but we've also been frugal in other areas and. Not done as many things, knowing that we have the elementary project coming up, because we want to have some cash on hand, so. Uh when I talk about having three million dollars in cash on hand, it's three point seven um. And you know, we did do roughs this summer, not quite to the extents of the middle school rough, but but there there are funds there.
So three point seven million, what you're calling cash on hand.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was taken off of the board report from July. The other, the other numbers were taken right off of uh the state reports.
I think we're in a good position as far as if there really is no deferred maintenance at this point, we've. Gotten all the roughs.
Well, they'll, they'll, they're, they're will continue to be rough work, it just won't be, it won't be the one million, I I don't think it'll be the one million, you know. This year we did, we did the big thing, the big uh Kerry Lee, have we been in Kerry Lee since it's been raining?
It's not.
Yeah, that's the right answer. So, so there was, there was four hundred thousand dollars in rough work um and. I would envision until we get Kerry Lee all done and high school all done, that there'll be one or two sections of those buildings that would come, so. It'd be really easy to say two hundred thousand dollars of rough work, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of rough work uh. For the foreseeable future until we get that all completed.
Yeah, and obviously there's gonna be always the threat of things that we don't know and don't think of. Um and we need as a district to have the financial flexibility to um. Continue to care for our facilities and um troubleshoot as needed and um.
Yeah, I would just expect that for the next few years, we'll be doing what we are aware of and planning on right now and not. Oh, shoot.
Not reactive.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you could have a list or a document that details out what we're expecting for Peppa Save, that would be helpful as we. Going to talk about our capacity and what we might have to do or not do.
Yeah, yeah, and again, we do have a special board meeting that is scheduled for this Wednesday to talk through the B E log. And B E stands for valued engineering, we're gonna talk about how to, you know. How to make, making decisions so we are ready to do that final design work and be ready to go to bed. Or what we're planning on right now is spring construction and um. In addition to some of the documents that Tim has verbally mentioned that he plans to share for our meeting on Wednesday. Is there anything in addition that would be helpful for the board to have for Wednesday? That you're wondering about?
So Aaron, your, yours is like a pebble.
Yeah, what do we.
Forecast.
What do we know that?
Best guess, yeah.
Yeah, like you mentioned, the roofs and.
And it'll probably be, it might be. Block amounts, there there might be some.
It's gonna be, yeah, flexible numbers, obviously.
Like you mentioned, you know, we're gonna do another computer for the staff.
And we use those for buses.
Mm hmm, I am thankful that we um had the recommendation and then the board was in support of the recommendation to bridge some bands. Um just for, you know, some of our higher mileage trips and smaller teams um. Think we've been putting our. Our money in the right places as we are navigating this year and navigating the conference and. Yeah, just wanna make sure that we have that capacity to continue to follow recommendations of our.
Yeah.
Our teams.
And also we need to note that we, the snake kind of swallowed a large animal passing through with this. Facility that we're sitting in, so we know we're not gonna be buying another bus barn.
Well, yeah, that that was, I mean, when I was kind of looking at this, I know we had spent. Bottom money with buying this, and then of course, that that does save us on the rent that we were paying for the other, the other facility, so. Purchasing this, purchasing um the uh.
Land.
The land for sure, and then to some degree, replacing an entire roof in one summer, were probably bigger things that. Well, coming from small districts, we would have really had to save up for that, the fact that we had cash on hand, but I will say uh we built that back. That fund balance back up, so um it's not like we just had a bunch of. Uh fund that we, we spent it down, we um, you know, from the the uh forty, four point two million to back up to three point seven. That's kind of, that's wonderful that we were able to do that many things and 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 not have depleted the the fund balance. But but that, we've kind of deferred a few things, like we've said, okay, you know, lights here or this shell. We we won't do right away.
So, yes, or the each of those three things, those purchases were pretty substantial in and of themselves.
Um, the only other thing that may be helpful for Wednesday that comes to my mind would be. Um from your document from. Piper Sand lawyer, so let's say. We picked this one, not this one or this one. What would the interest payments be?
Yeah, just a couple of loan scenarios that are now ten million dollars pushing all the chips in.
Exactly.
Maybe a five million, maybe a two million, maybe a.
Yeah.
And what are those like and.
Yeah.
Annualizations.
Yeah. That would be, that's continued, I'm pretty sure Travis will get that, I'll just. Asking very nice though.
I think it's interesting, um I'm really glad we're working with Travis, um he's been present at. At least one of our board meetings, but I I also liked his creativity and um. Being able to structure loans with. Different payment amount at different times in history to allow us to, you know. Begin, but then allow debt to retire and then ramp up later on. Okay, so this is a discussion item and review, if there are any other things that would help to talk about together to you while we're on the side. Before we move on.
I can, the only thing I would say is. Having been around for a while and as a, you know, phase out, I'm very happy with where we're at, I think. The last W U S is in a very favorable position. We've got, you know, good leadership from all of our superintendents and it's left us. Okay, yeah, good leadership from all of our superintendents and it's left us. Yeah, obviously, the state funding is a substantial problem, but we're surviving it because we. We're in a good place. To start, not that we can last forever with. Red terms for state funding, but. We're doing pretty well.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the only piece to add to this would be just for the viewing public. We're only allowed to spend out of certain silos to do certain things, so. Just because we have a go bond for thirty million does not mean we can use that to pay teachers. Everything has a purpose from the state, and so we are only allowed to spend purposefully out of our funds.
I'm really glad that you are so well informed on. Um school budgeting, Aaron, you know that it is not. Easy and takes years to learn, but it's it's an important dance that we do as a school district, you know, that we're. Speaking in ways um to help articulate to the public of what money it can go where, because it's not easy and it's it's. Most people don't understand how that works.
Yep. So. Yeah, we we've got certain funds and so when we get around to the master contracts again in April, hopefully. Depending on what the state passes.
You're optimistic.
Uh yes, I'm very optimistic, uh I know that they're supposed to, but I don't expect that to ever happen, so. But we're only allowed to pay for teachers' budgets out of general fund, we can't. Slide around and borrow money from somewhere else.
Well, thanks in advance, Tim, for gathering more information for us and kindly requesting more information from Travis. First thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Well, it's, yeah, it's really helpful information to have.
Yeah, it is. Okay, and we are down to item ten, which is the superintendent's report.
Not, not much there, new photographers, so I think things went well with Justin's. We former board member stopped in and told me that he thought the grounds looked better than they ever had and.
I think so too.
I do so, but I didn't wanna. Miss pass up the opportunity to compliment Curtis and the crew that. Because I think maybe grounds are a little like umpires, you don't. Yeah, it's best if you don't notice the grounds, if you, if you walk by and you say, wow, there's a lot of that. Those grounds that look very good, then that's not a good sign, so. Kudos to the grounds department, uh especially, so and then I shared Ross's information about uh. Hundred years of being Vikings and I understand F E C is now gonna do something to celebrate this. Are we, I wanna know if we're gonna have, so we used to be the red and blue, so we were decorum. High school, red and blue, very great. Never saw that one coming.
I never knew that.
So, yeah, there there's for trivia, but are we gonna do a retro, like the decor red and blues?
Oh, we got, I was like, that is Dr. Crone, this is like this.
Yeah, oh yeah. Ross sent it to me and then I had to tell. Yeah, no, I I went and found the article when Ross says, sent it to me, we we could have been what Kelton's Colts? Which, once Kelton retires from being the football coach, I'm not sure how that works or or. Or the invincibles. I mean, both Vikings is pretty sweet, but.
Red and blue sounds better than that.
Well, I, well, decorum invincibles, I mean, I don't know.
Well, until you do lose one, you may prove that you are invincible.
Yeah, yeah. I I suppose that probably would set you up, so. Anyway, so that, thanks for sharing Ross and uh that was fun, so I just kind of shared that. Decorous street improvements, so as we continue to work on that.
Yeah, big projects.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. I can confirm this instruction has started today as they said it would.
Thanks for verifying that.
You've been taking that first left turn off of Water Street.
Okay.
Conference.
Oh, sure, um so. We're waiting with the conference bill, we're waiting on the administrative guidelines and um. Thought it might take six to nine months. But now we're told that they will be, the committee has a draft of guidelines that will be published. September seventeen.
A week from today.
A week from today.
Yeah, so it's not as if that means, oh, it's done, but. They've made good progress to get it drafted out and at that point, it'll be open for public comment and we'll be able to. Review and have input, so.
And. It will be published.
In the Iowa Administrative Bulletin, which you can only find on the legislature's website, but.
Well, we'll have to review it, if we have any comments, we could.
Yeah.
Share those and if there's other districts that wanna wanna. Share our thoughts, we might put together with them.
Yeah, I'm sure there is going to be a lot of change. Because I think this is something where there's gonna be a lot of details that someone's gonna say, what about this? And I go. Yeah, never thought about that, so it's gonna grow a lot, I think. Before it becomes final.
Another big step that was accomplished this last year is passing that legislation to have. A different decision-making system, so.
Very timely because it's not just us anymore, all of Southwest Iowa is kind of. Trying to reorganize. Like there were several changes that tried to get under the gun of July first before the law became effective, but. They didn't, so.
Okay, and moving down to item eleven, our financial report, but I don't believe we have a report to review, this is the end of our. I know that Joan is busy looking at our car reports. So I guess we'll wait until October to get September's report and we can review it at a later date. Okay, so we've reached the end of our agenda and I'll call the meeting adjourned, thanks everybody.